Let me call this meeting to order. It's the agenda of a regular meeting of the City Commission of Rio Grande City, Texas. It's Wednesday, March 28th, 2018 at 6:00 PM. We're in Commission Chamber, City Hall, 5332 East US Highway 83, Sweden A, in Rio Grande City, Texas. I'm gonna ask Mr. Ramirez to lead us in the invocation and Mr. Jones to lead us in the pledge.
With our heads, thank you, Lord, for allowing us to be here today. I ask you please to clear our minds and allow us to make the correct and best decisions for the city of Rio Grande, and in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the people of Texas, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal. On this Texas flag, a pledge to the city of Texas, one state under God, one nation.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll move on to roll call. Fanny in North Florida?
Mayor Villarreal. Mayor Villarreal is absent. Mayor Protem Garza?
Here.
Commissioner Salinas? Commissioner Salinas is absent. Commissioner Ramirez?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
You have a call, Mayor.
Thank you. Before we go to departmental reports, if there is a, if we can please go to number five, planning, I'm sorry, number six, City Manager's Report, and it's the presentation of the annual Rio Grande City Police Department's racial profile report.
Mr. Salis?
Good afternoon, Commissioner. This year, you guys have our annual racial profiling report. It's a mandated requirement by the state for our department and every department to submit their racial profiling reports. This year, total stops that just includes citations was 1,247. Out of that, four of them were both citations and an arrest. Hispanics were 1,241 Hispanics cited, six Caucasians. That includes the searches of the vehicles on the arrests, which was 12, and all 12 of them were consented. This is an annual report that we do have to submit this year also, but it doesn't require us to report it. Since we got two years ago our BodyCam grant, we have to report, give a report for them as well for the first three years. So this is our second year that we submitted it as well.
Very good. Any questions for the PD?
Was there a difference from last year's?
Yes, there was. There was a slight decrease in citations, well, a big increase, decrease in citations this year. So far this year, we've seen it's been picking up a little bit more.
Okay. No questions? No questions. Very good. It was only a presentation by the police department. We'll go ahead and move on to 1C, departmental reports. Mr. Peddic?
Sure. Of that, Ms. Sarah, did you want to talk about tourism?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner.
Good evening.
As I mentioned, last month, we're still working on the State of the City address, which is tomorrow. We put out the invitation on social media, and I know we've mailed out some invitations, so that'll be taking place tomorrow. We will be practicing a dry run today, so we can work out any technical difficulties. And also later on in the agenda, we'll discuss the Freedom Fest event, so I think I can discuss it a little bit further at that moment. Any questions?
Will you elaborate on the trip that UTRGV is coming down next Friday?
They're coming on April 6th. I actually just heard about it today. They will be coming, a group of teachers will be coming on a charter bus to tour around Rio Grande City. They'll be stopping at the Fort Ringgold, and their last stop will be at the museum. So we found out that they will be going by the museum today, so we're gonna do what we need to do in our own to prepare for that visit.
Where's the group of teachers coming?
They're coming from all over the valley, so they're from Mission, McAllen, San Isidro. And basically, this tour is to help them get more knowledge on the Civil War Trail. Rio Grande City had some history on that, so they're just visiting some of the sites on the Civil War Trail, to be able to bring that back to the students and teach them about it.
They'll also be presenting the museum, a learning box, which includes a full uniform of the Confederate and a Union soldier. This is out of a manufacturing kiln, Tennessee, or something like that. So they'll be providing, so eventually, whenever the museum has a component, they'll be able to display it on the mannequins.
Very good.
We have actually a Confederate soldier buried in the San Antonio Cemetery, and a Union soldier buried in the cemetery in the middle of the town.
Oh.
Yes, so that visit will take place on April 6th when we come back from the holiday.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Salis, did you have anything to add from your department?
No, just to let you, everyone know, the Commissioner, know that we did submit our border star grant for 2018, 2019, and we actually submitted it today. And we're waiting on a response from Stone Garden, which should be in the next couple of months to start off October 1st, 2019.
How much did y'all commit?
For border star, I found out through the state that we could actually apply for overtime for our dispatchers to be working when we have officers out on the street. So it's a total of 165,000. For Stone Garden, I just submitted today our two-year budget, proposed budget plan. That one is for 125,000, and it's strictly overtime.
Very good. Thank you, Joe.
Do we have an update from Public Works or Aviel? Did y'all want to talk about the citywide cleanup?
We had a good turnout on the citywide cleanup this last time, and that's the reason, we had like 300 residents use the citywide cleanup. So for that reason, we decided to do it at least once a month, like a week per month, like until further notice.
So these were 300 homes that you didn't have to go pick up the trash from?
Yes. Yeah, they deviated the brush truck going through the routes and stuff like that, too, picking up brush and bulky, so.
So what you're proposing is a specific week of the month, so everybody is familiar with that?
Yes. My recommendation is to do it like at least once a month, a week out of the month.
At that same?
And the best thing is like maybe the last week of the month, so.
That would be at the same, same location?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe people are still going back and asking?
Yeah, there's a, yeah, a lot of people have asked and have brought trash and stuff to the, to the yard, and they still wanna like bring them over, so.
It made a big difference.
Yeah.
You can tell.
Oh, yeah.
It made a big difference, and the town, the townsite looks clean.
And right now, it's the time to cut branches and stuff like that, so you guys probably see a bunch of brush piles all over.
It's western brush on both gyms only, not construction?
Yeah, mixed brush, mixed brush, too.
Not construction material or?
I, we're giving the people that, like for residents that do their own construction, yeah, we're accepting like a pool, a pickup pool of construction, but no contractors, no nothing like that.
But somebody's there monitoring the, I guess, drop-off?
Yes, yes. We got somebody from Public Works and a person from Code Enforcement.
And that's the reason we're not leaving it open all the time? Because you gotta, you have to have at least two people there?
Yeah.
Helping coordinate. One verifies that they're a resident, while then maybe another two might be lined up already dumping stuff. And what happened is, if you leave it alone, they'll tend to mix up stuff in one of the bins, and then they have to separate it later.
Yeah.
So you have to have some oversight.
So.
It'd be good to try to put it, the rural review goes back up and put it out on social media, newspaper, and make sure the residents are aware that we're gonna start doing this on a monthly basis.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Thank you. Does this need action, or can it be done administratively?
We took action last time.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd have to bring it back.
Okay. This is an action item?
Yeah.
Okay. Next?
We've got the public library. Ms. Norma, you wanna come up?
Toot your horn.
I'm sorry?
No, so you can toot your horn?
Ms. Norma, are you in a hurry? Can, can, can you hold off a little bit till the mayor gets here? He wants to be here for your presentation.
Yeah.
If you don't mind.
Okay, all right. So then we got Ms. Reselli from PD.
Good evening, Commissioners. I briefly report, we got the final reports for the water tank inspections. They only gave me one copy, so if you all wanna visit with me, I can show them to you. We did better than expected, but they are gonna need a little bit of sun blasting and all that. On the other hand, we've been moving forward on the water distribution, replacing the cast iron water lines. And that being said, our water loss has improved a lot. We averaged it about a year per, on a yearly basis, it's 11%, which we can go back when we started, it was about maybe 40, 50%. So we worked on it, me and Ricardo and one of our water plant operators, and we're at about 11% on a yearly average. So we've been moving forward, you know, on the distribution, helping a lot with fixing all those cast iron water lines and all that.
Are there a lot of, are those old cast iron lines still out there?
Yes, not a whole lot, but you're, we've been pinpointing them, and you know, since we've been having to do emergency repairs, like at a water plant, old water plant has been out of service for about a month and a half. So I'm holding back a little bit on those cast iron lines that haven't given, haven't been giving us trouble.
And that 11% is pretty much due to leaks of those old lines?
Yes, yes. So you know, it has improved a lot, like you know, like I said, because when we started, it was about 50%, and we averaged it, and it's at 11%. So it's been, we're moving forward. That's what, you know, we can see the difference on the percentage, you know, of our water loss.
So conceptually, they're supposed to be working on identifying where all the cast iron lines are, so we can identify what the cost will be and come up with a plan to complete.
We have, most of them came pointed, but then if we have a leak and we didn't know, so we, you know, we working with Real Delta at the same time, you know, they're mapping them out. You know, so most of them, we have them, but they've come across, you know, ones that we didn't know they were there, so, you know, just trying to figure out till the extension of the line itself goes.
Have we, have we gone out on bids for the lift stations yet?
Yes, actually, we had the pre-bid meeting on Tuesday, Monday, and it went well. Gilbert, Julio, ourselves, when Ms. Beas also went by, you know, to check the lift stations itself.
Okay.
So once we come back for the holiday, we'll have the?
Yeah, the bid opening, so they're opening on the 4th at 3 o'clock.
Okay, good, good.
So it's moving forward.
How many bidders did we have?
I think they got 20, 20 that picked up plans, but that includes also suppliers and some of your Dodge reports, houses where people go and get bids in. But at the meeting that we had, like about six?
Yeah, we had about six, yes, about six bidders that came along, yeah, and one or two vendors, the suppliers itself. But it's hoping, yeah, when we come back, we'll do the bid opening packets on the 4th of April.
A lot of the bidders probably did not come to the pre-bid. It was not mandatory, but they were familiar because of the previous procurement, so they, they didn't come to this one on Monday.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ilan?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just an update of what the Code Enforcement Division is working on during the past couple of weeks. We found an increased volume in the sewer plants of grease and motor oil, so they've been robbing by every mechanic shop, oil change place, restaurant, high grease consumption place, if you wanna call it, to make sure that they're properly disposing of grease and oil. It's not only beneficial for the environment to have, keep these places clean, but also it's healthier, and of course, our sewer plants are much, much cleaner and working properly. Again, investigating, making sure that they have maintenance logs, and investigating where they dispose of their both grease and motor oil.
How did we discover that? You could see it floating on the water?
Yes.
Is it something that gets processed? It doesn't get processed when it goes through the system?
What happened is that it actually kills your bacteria that is used to break down your solids, and so it starts foaming, and those are, it's just not efficient for the wastewater treatment plant.
I get you.
Again, it's, I call it growing veins. I mean, there's a lot of mom pops, mechanic shops, motor oil changes, car washes, you name it, places that require immediate attention, you know, this is something that's going through our sewer lines, and definitely, we can enforce through building codes, inspections, and of course, follow-up inspections.
Public Works has been doing a good job on the, on the alleys, and we've been, it doesn't take long before we see trash out there again. Are we going back and notifying these people that they're to put the brush up in front of the street?
Yes, they're supposed to be, Code Enforcement's supposed to be visiting the alleys that have been cleaned, and they've identified some already residents that started dumping again, and they've been taking appropriate steps, obviously citing them for it, because it makes no sense for Public Works and company to be cleaning the alleys and they turn around and fill them up with junk again. So they're going through the process of educating them, you know, trying to work with them, but if they're not really making a difference, then we go back and cite them for it. I don't know how many you've cited, but I know you've been out there.
At least between three to five people so far. I think people are thinking the manage of the offer for the free disposal of waste in a facility, and that's what we offer, we emphasize that, and people like it, so far, so good. Again, there are some people that believe, well, they'll just pick it up again, and we have to educate them, literally, that's, that's what it comes back to.
Well, and Aviel could probably talk about how we've been working with different businesses and residents that have abandoned homes. Most recently, we got the lady from the old fire, I mean, from the old Ford, that came in, and we offered her the ability to take one of our roll-ups or two of them, as long as they cleared that property fairly quickly. Obviously, after the fire, the walls are at risk of falling and maybe damaging somebody that's passing by in a vehicle, or maybe even hurting someone. And so we convinced her that if she took action fairly quickly and completely finished it, we would possibly help her out with some of the costs associated with the, with the roll-ups. And she took it, the bait, and she came in, and she's working on it.
Perhaps something can also be done with that building on Water Street, that burned that historical building, because that also has, really, the integrity of the walls has suffered.
We're talking to them about, they haven't removed any of the bricks that are in the street, and so they've been contacted, right, Mr. Peddic?
They had to contact, but close to 10, probably, families. And of course, you know, it's an unfortunate situation, it's a historical building, but still needs to be taken care of.
Very good. Very good. Mario?
Finance, got any updates? I know the audit folks are, been here with us.
Good evening, public workers. They're saying no, no update to give, it's just the auditors came in today, so they really started working on the audit. So from here on out, it's probably another six to eight weeks to get it done.
Talking about which, which year? 2015, 16?
16. 15, 16 year.
But your folks are already working on the next one?
Yeah, hopefully, by the time they finish that one, we're ready for them to start the other.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Ms. Guillen?
Good evening.
A while back, I had mentioned to you that the EDC was undertaking an initiative to revisit and update Rio 2020. This was a plan that was developed back in 98 as a long-term plan to develop jobs, improve quality of life, family incomes in Rio Grande City. We are working with a group right now to reach out to the stakeholders to participate in various activities. As part of this plan, we have a community and economic assessment and survey, some informational and educational workshops that will be open to the public, and we invite the community to participate, and then of course, a SWAT exercise. We're working with participants, our speakers, to come in in April and May, and soon as we lock in those dates, we'll be sure to notify the Commission as well as everyone by way of invitation. But the result of this plan is to produce a high-level economic development strategic plan that's gonna help drive our decisions moving forward and help us steer our projects towards developing jobs and improving the quality of life. If you recall, I mentioned we have partners helping us finance this project, and so I wanna thank BBVA Compass, the National Association of Latino Community Asset Builders, and the Rural Empowerment Advancement Program. We're really looking forward to this. It's a tedious exercise, but it's one that needs to be undertaken, and so I just, you know, I'm looking forward to the results of these conversations, and we will be engaging our Commissioners as well as the community to provide us their comments and feedback on how we can make improvements for the general community. And we don't have dates yet, but as soon as we do lock in those speakers in April and May, these will not be during the week. Unfortunately, the general community is more likely to participate on a Saturday, so we're gonna ask for a couple of hours to join us and discuss some of these issues. But there was a long list, I mean, I can't even count the number of people that participated in Rio 2020, so it's gonna take an effort to bring people together again, talk about what's been done, and what still needs to be completed, and plans for the future, but we're, we're just excited. It's a lot of work for us, but we're excited.
Very good. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
If you don't mind, I'd like to first talk on the Parks and Rec. I know Mr. Pedalic is, he's been out, the week is kinda sick right now, so, but they had their event, Easter, at the park. It was very well-attended. They had a little over 200 kids with their parents. We even had some volunteers that were foreign exchange students with the UTRGV helping out. It must've been a shocker, because one of the students was from Sweden, and it was 96 degrees, but they were, they were real glad to be there, helping us out.
They had four fields, the three fields were with the egg hunt, and then they had to open another one for the smaller, the toddlers, because they didn't want to be left out, of course. They had a dunk booth, and they all had a lot of fun. So I will say that was a very successful, much well-attended, the event by the Parks and Recs. Right now, they are not present, because they're at their basketball games. Eric and Ricky Casas out there. And my other reports, it's a part of the agenda that I've been working on, besides assisting some departments with the annexation, and also with the EDA grant. We'll say that on the 9th, the archaeologists will start some of the digging at the site, and hopefully, we, we don't find anything.
They'll start on the 9th?
Yes, sir.
And it should take a couple of weeks?
It's a pedestrian, and then they'll put down some sites that they want digging for maybe up to three feet deep, and if there, nothing is found, then they finish the report, they submit it to the Texas Historical Commission. It takes around three weeks for them to review it, hopefully less, and we'll get our clearance.
But along the way, once they are done with the report, we'll get, we'll have some idea?
Yes, we'll be presented with their final report.
Before it's, I guess, certified by them?
With their professional opinion, yes.
The study's gonna be done in the 20 acres for the proposed business coming in, or you're talking about the whole?
No, so this?
Field back there?
This survey's being done along the area that will be excavated, and where the road will be constructed.
Only those areas?
Those areas where the federal funds will be used.
Okay. Only where there's gonna be excavation?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone else?
I'd like to hear from Fernando Herrera. Fernando, you're doing a great job with those alleys.
Thank you, sir.
You and your crew, you and your crew, and?
We're trying our best, Mr. Garza, to get our city clean.
It really, it really looks clean, looks real good.
Well, thank you so much, sir. Hope everybody likes it, so we're trying hard. It's, on the, we, so far, we've been pulling down 10 roll-offs out of those alleys, 10 roll-offs for the, that goes to the landfill, for sanitation will take it, and there was a total of 28.89 tons of brush that we pulled out on alleys, and it makes brush 15.2 tons on those alleyways, so there was a lot of debris and trash out there.
Where are you all at right now, Fernando?
We're between Lopez and Garza, sir. Lopez and Garza and Sixth, Sixth or Fifth Street. We're working out there today, and we're going south as we're moving on, sir. And like I say, we're trying our best to, hopefully, we'll get them done, all of them, pretty soon, so, weather permitting, and attending all these other calls also that we have throughout the city, which is key to get about the calls, you know, to attend everybody, so. Trash bags, we picked up 1,157 trash bags this past month, sir. We picked it up through our city crews, and of course, patching and tree trimming, all those things from, that are needed throughout the city, so that's what we've done for this past month, and of course, helping out the city all also.
Once we get it done, Fernando, we'll have a lot of time for the rest of the?
Sure will.
The shores.
(laughing).
Now, give up the good work, Fernando.
Thank you so much, sir.
Good.
Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you.
Chief, Reyes, are you gonna come out from the hiding back there?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Yesterday, we had a meeting in Roma, Department for the mitigation plan, that we're working for the emergency management plan, so it's been a continuance since the past two, three months. Once we complete the plan as a regional plan for the Starr County area that involves Starr County, Roma, Scovars, and Rio Grande City, we're gonna be able to apply for grants for mitigating areas in our area, in Rio Grande City, in case we need to do improvements for any time that we have floodings or major disasters and things like that. So we're working on that, and continues with the emergency plan, that for this coming hurricane season, it starts in June, so we're working in reference with that, both plans. Hopefully, we getting some water minutes for that.
Are we coming along with the fire hydrants?
In our?
Fire hydrants?
Hydrants? Fire hydrants?
Yeah, fire hydrants, my hydrants.
We're, we're still working on them, whereas, as we go, there's, so we've been doing some annexation, so we're trying to get all the numbers since. Hopefully, within the next couple of months, we should have all the numbers. If you all can see on the west side of the county, and what we have annexed in the Alvarez area and Midway and all that, they're doing some new improvements, that they're doing a new water line at 12-inch, that's going all the way to 3167 with a new water tower that belongs to Rio Water. So they're putting in hydrants themselves in there. I believe they're doing about 12 to 15 miles of improvement, so that's gonna help that area, and also it's gonna help our area in reference to water pressure. But I know there are about 20, 30 hydrants that have been installed in that area, so it's gonna give us all improvements to all that area on that side over there. So it's been a pretty productive improvement that they're doing out there. Hopefully, we're gonna be getting more hydrants in, so we'll be seeing what the outcome of that is.
Is there a color code for fire hydrants?
Yes, we have four color codes. Light blue is the highest, and how it is, we range it on measuring on pressure, how much pressure the fire hydrant has, and it's, the highest is light blue, it's about 1,500 GPM, gallons per minute or above, and then it goes to a green, that 1,500 or less, up to 1,200, and then it goes to about 850, and then 650. So you have light blue, green, yellow, and red. If you see a silver one, that means that it's not working.
That, that's what's in the?
And then it goes to a green, that 1,500 or less, up to 1,200, and then it goes to about 850 and then 650. So you have light blue, green, yellow, and red. If you see a silver one, that means that it's not working.
That, that's what I was going to ask you about, the gray one or silver one, so that means it's not working.
Yeah, well, we had encountered in the past that when development is being done by the subdivision or the developer, a lot of the times, valves in the fire hydrants are not open. So the developer finishes doing the development of the subdivision and then leave them like that. So we have to get either a real water supplier or a union or, you know, us to go out there and open the valve.
And I was going to ask you, because in front of my house, there's a gray one, but I know it belongs to, we get water from a real water supply, but of course, we're within the city limits. So who's the person to contact? Is that you or the real water supplier?
You can call our department and we'll try to address it to the real water supplier. Now, you can call real water and address it to them. We do the maintenance on the fire hydrants, but the water belongs to them because the CCNs belong to that jurisdiction, not the district. But we'll try to work with them and see if we can help them on it. We can go out there and try to open the valve ourselves. We'll do that. If not, we'll make a report and address it to them at that time.
I know that I've seen a couple of, along that, that were installed and then the holes were left there. Are we tapping those? We're leaving them there, or what's the plan on that?
The problem is that, the situation there is that ones that are already painted, you know, that color-coded is because it's a city line that we did or the developer did at the point, at the time of development. Like all you see, like the storages there and stripes and all. There's an eight or 10-inch water line that the developer installed through our fire codes at that time. So that was a requirement at that time. Right now, since they're putting a 12-inch line, the engineer, I believe, took it upon themselves, you know, let's put fire hydrants in our water line, but if that's theirs, it's a 12-inch. So they, they kind of put two hydrants, one, you know, next to each other. I did mention to him, you know, what it would be a better idea. We will kind of play some part. The code requires in a commercial area for them to be 500 feet within that area, or 300 feet, excuse me, and a residential is 500. So I did, it would have been a better idea to kind of put them in, you know, where they're not allowing them or not trying to get them somewhere where we need them at. But the engineer was the one that developed that construction out there, so that's why the difference. And the water line belongs to real water later.
Is that something that needs to be addressed by Planning Department whenever somebody turns in a plat for a subdivision?
Yes, it should have been brought up to the Planning Department of the city so we could actually review it and make sure we're in, you know, the same page in reference to how the process is going to work with actually the project. But, you know, I believe Real Water took it upon themselves and they just started the construction. And, you know, they're doing the full project on that, so.
Doesn't that affect also the insurance, homeowner insurance rates? If you have a 500 close to your home, obviously, it's a better rate, I understand?
It does help some of it, but ISO Insurance Service Office has changed so much because of, you know, there's been so many houses burned and insurance claims and all that stuff. So it's changed a lot. It's going to probably benefit them. But at the same time, and also, it has to do with making sure that you have a fire station within five miles from your area. That's a real big effect. So it's changed quite a bit because in the past year, we used to make out letters and send them, you know, they're within a five-mile range. Now they don't want that. They'll do a GPS and make sure that it is, and if it's not, they'll just give you a rating, whatever it is. So some of those areas qualify for a 10, so that's a real high rating for that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? You want to hold up and Mr. Norma?
Mrs. Goma, if you don't mind? We'll come back. Very good, okay. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. It's a two-way. We can either take them separately or altogether. I'll read them out. It's the approval of departmental travel requests, approval of meetings from the previous meetings, and approval of action taken at the meeting of the Kelsey Bass Museum and the Event Center Commission held on March 1st, 2018.
Mayor Portem, I make a motion to approve items A, B, and C in consent agenda.
Second.
We would have a motion by Mr. Ramirez and a second by Mr. Jones. All those in... All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We go to, I don't know, 3A, resolutions, discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 2018-8, amending authorized representative with the Texas Local Government Investment Pool.
Mr. Cantu?
Basically, all this is, council is just removing the previous finance director and adding myself to it because it's, the other name's still there. It might still not edit there.
Okay. Very good. I saw move.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Jones. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We go to 3B. Discussion and possible action to approve resolution 2018-9 that will approve the correction to the March 7th, 2018 special meeting of the City Commission Agenda, correcting the date of the meeting previously posted as March 7th, 2018 to the actual year of the meeting, March 7th, 2018, and ratifying all actions of said meeting. Better?
March 7th, 2017.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay.
Spain?
Commissioners, this is just a resolution to ratify all items discussed on the March 7th, 2018 meeting. Since it was posted with the incorrect date, this is just a procedure legal has recommended, just to ratify the items on that agenda.
Okay, it doesn't affect any action we took?
No, it doesn't affect any action.
Very good. Any question?
I saw move, I saw.
I have a motion.
I'll send a motion.
Send to Mr. Ramirez. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Carry. Go to C, discussion and possible action to approve resolution 2018-10 that will approve a change to the voting location from the city of Regan City, May 5th, 2018, general election from City Hall Meeting Room, City Hall 5332 East US Highway 83, Suite 8, Regan City, Texas, to Commissioners' Courtroom, Stark County Courthouse, 401 North Britton Avenue, Regan City, Texas, 78582, and ratifying the same changes to be applied to the ordinance 2018-1 previously passed and approved on March 7th, 2018. Better?
Mayor Portem, I'll refer that to legal for explanation.
Okay.
And Mayor Portem, our recommendation is that this item be withdrawn. The actual change or the actual resolution should have read from Kelsey Bass to the courthouse. As you read it, it reads from the City Hall and it gives this address. So our recommendation, as it was posted-
We need to include it in the motion?
Well, no, what you need to do at this point is withdraw it and it'll be posted for the agenda of April 11th. You still have time. I'm sorry, April 11th, right? So at this time, we're, our recommendation is that you withdraw this.
Someone needs to move to withdraw.
Need a motion?
I saw move to withdraw item C from the agenda.
I have one, a second by Mr. Jones. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We go to number four, ordinances, second reading and approval of ordinance number 2007-10, amending the city of Regan City's fee schedule for increasing certain fees and imposing new fees, including fees required by variance, applications, septic tanks, inspections, contractor registration, re-inspections, and single and minor subdivision final plat applications to help offset direct costs incurred by the city of Regan City when conducting such inspections and processing of appropriate applications.
Mayor Portem, Commissioners, this is, again, the second reading of the proposed ordinance. Again, emphasis on to offset costs. The only two fees that are increasing are the re-inspection from $20 to $50. Obviously, the cost of fuel has increased since 15 years ago. This fee is about around that time. The contractor registration fee, we're one of the few cities valleywide that does not have that fee in particular. The septic tank fee, again, this is the same fee that Stark County used to collect when they were doing septic tank inspections inside our city limits. Since we have now somebody certified to perform those inspections, it is only fair that we collect that particular permit here. The single-family homes subdivision, at this point, it's also increasing. It's from $100 to $500. We have found out that the minimum cost to hire an engineer to review even a one-lot subdivision is between $400 to up to $1,300 for review only. We're not making any money. We're just trying to pay for the services. And the variance request, we don't have an actual fee at this point. For residential, it's $180, and for commercial, it's $300. The process for, obviously, a variance request is costly. This is taxpayers' money. We have to set up meetings for planning and zoning. Sometimes we have to revisit the permits, the variance request. We have to call for hearings, publish it in the newspaper. And it's pretty complex, the process. So again, we're only suggesting a fee that other municipalities can charge somewhere between $400, $300, all the way to $500, $600.
Very good. No, I think it's fair.
I'd like to ask him to make sure, the mayor would ask him, are you sure those are the correct fees and that's enough?
Yeah, his question was if he was enough. I think it's never enough. But again, it's just to offset a little bit the costs.
Anything to add to that?
No, that's it.
That's it? Need a question?
No, I saw move to approve item A.
I have a motion, second by Mr. Jones. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 4B, second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2018-1, establishing voting procedures and other matters related thereto for the May 5th, 2018 general election.
Spain?
Mayor Portem, Commissioners, this is the same ordinance we read. The only difference is the change in location. So we will be changing from the Kelsey Bass Museum to the Commissioners' Courtroom on 401 North Britton. And I also changed the election day. Election day will be there at the Commissioners' Courtroom. The only difference is that for the central counting station, we will have it here in this court, in this meeting room, and this will be where we announce the official results.
Can we take action on this item?
Yes.
Any question?
I saw move.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We move on to letter C, discussion and possible action to approve historical district sign ordinance 2018-2.
Mayor Portem, this is an ordinance we've been working with. There's actually two of them, the historical one and the other one, which is D. On both of those, we've been working with legal and in going back and forth, we uncovered some additional information that needs to be considered. And the recommendation from legal is that we take the appropriate time to make sure that we don't put anything in place that might be challenged. And so we're just erring on the safe side to make sure we take extra time for this. So at this time, we're asking for that item to be taken.
Are you also asking for letter D to be tabled?
Yes, sir.
Can we take them both at the same time? Do I have to read letter D?
I suggest we do read them separately. Or either one separately-
Okay, I'll ask for a motion for letter C.
I want that we table item C.
I have a motion, second by Mr. Jones. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll go to letter D, discussion and possible action approving ordinance 2018-3, amending the city of Regan City sign ordinance 2001-7.
I can't-
And it's the same recommendation.
Same recommendation to table at this time, for the same reasons.
I'm motioning to table item D.
I second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We go to Planning, number five, letter A, discussion, discussion and possible action on request for wine and beer retailers off-premise license by Tina Luis Andrade for business located at 5876 East Highway 83. Did I say that right? Yeah, okay.
Yes, Mayor Portem, Commissioners, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval for this item in the regular meeting agenda of March 15, 2018. They had, there was a previous legal license at this location. As we're headed towards McAllen, past the railroad tracks, it's on the south side. Immediately, it's a right through. Again, he has had a license in the past. We're just, because it changed ownership, we're just giving it to the constituent a new license. Other than that, again, the place has been licensed in the past.
And it's going through Pincic?
Yes, sir. They recommend approval on March 15.
Okay.
I saw move, Mayor Portem.
I have a motion by Mr. Ramirez, second by Mr. Jones. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We did 6A. We go to number seven. Contracts and agreements, discussion and possible action to approve contract with some-
Zambelli.
Zambelli fireworks manufacturing company for the 2018 Freedom Fest. Better?
Mr. Hernandez?
I'm working already on securing the firework contract for this year's Freedom Fest event. We're proposing two different dates. The most difficult date is probably the Fourth of July, so we solicited the contract for that date. At this moment, we had, somebody approached us about wanting to partner and do an event, so that date may change. However, just so that we have something in writing, I suggest that we approve the contract as is because it's very difficult to get fireworks on the Fourth of July, and that'll be our backup plan.
So the Freedom Fest would be on July the Fourth?
Yes.
July the Fourth?
Right now, it's intended to be.
We've had comments from the community that they want something on-
The Fourth, yeah.
For a while, so we thought maybe we could give it a try.
It falls on the Fourth of July?
On a Wednesday.
On a Wednesday?
And if we do go through with the other events, then it would be on June 30th, the Saturday before Fourth of July. But that's still just in the early, early stages. Nothing's confirmed at this moment. So I want to make sure we have fireworks for the Fourth of July if we don't partner with those other people for it.
How many minutes with the display? I know in the past-
It's 15 minutes.
15.
And it would still be at the park.
Your recommendation is?
Is that we approve the contract as is. If we need to change the date, we have until May 1st to do it.
That can be done administratively, or we have to come back?
We're approving the contract. I mean, the date can be approved administratively, no?
Yeah, the contract is still going to be with Zambelli. It would just be the date. That's why I'm mentioning that the date may change, but we will still continue with Zambelli. They're a Class B firework. I tried contacting other companies for other quotes, but they were either higher or didn't do Class B fireworks, and I don't really want to downgrade the show.
So Class B means exactly what?
That they're professional fireworks shows. It's not something that you can buy at a fireworks stand.
Okay. Okay. And they've done, the past three years, they've done a good job, so I think that.
I think they've done a good job, and they have insurance, and they work with myself and Chiprez to make sure that they have the appropriate paperwork, they have to apply for a permit with the state, and that's the only way we allow them to have the display.
Very good. Hopefully, we get a lot of ring back.
I know, because we always end up having like a little.
Make sure it's green.
We always get like a little baby fire. But, that's why it's important to have the fire department there, and they were able to take care of it swiftly.
I assume you'll approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Jones.
I'll take a motion.
Taken by Mr. Ramirez, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We go to letter B, discussion and possible action to execute contract with SMB Infrastructure.
Mayor Commissioners.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Mayor Commissioners, in your packet, you have the fee proposal from SMB Infrastructures. They have outlined the scope of services that we are requesting from them. This is part of the EDA project for the development, commercial development. We have been in communication, they were the highest scored, and so now we have negotiated the fee. They will be doing everything to get the project ready to get approved by EDA, and also to take it out for bids.
I'll pass the baton.
We work with.
We're on.
It is 6:52, and if there's no objection, I now have the chair, no objection.
No objection.
We're on seven B, Mr. Mayor.
Seven B. Man, you're faster.
It's the more than two.
All right, so seven B, contracts and agreements, letter B, discussion and possible action to execute contract with SMB Infrastructure.
Yes, Mayor, when you were coming in, I was telling them that we met with them, we thoroughly reviewed the project, and they have provided their fee proposal, the scope of work, that they're responsible, they are aware that this project is the one being funded by EDA, they are within the budget, and the schedule that we work, is working with the schedule that we have with the 380 development agreement. Mr. Hector Lopez is in the audience, he's with SMB, if you have any questions on his proposal, like I mentioned, it is within budget, and we're working with the schedule with the developer, so it's moving fast and alongside.
Has it been reviewed by caution?
I know we emailed it to you.
Yes.
So, we're ready to go, is that?
Yes, sir, we're ready, so if you all decide not to award, we would not only delay this project, we would also delay the development agreement.
But the disagreement is pending the purchased property, am I correct? Or how is that, how are we going to go about that, if the property has not been officially, I guess, purchased yet?
The agreement.
We're going to put the contract, and then what if that deal falls through?
If the deal falls through?
Yeah, let's say that, let's say there's no closing of that property, what happens then?
If the project, for whatever reason, does not move forward, there is a section in the contract where it is mutually, you know, terminated because of no fault on both sides.
Okay, no more questions, okay, that's fine.
And I see here staff recommends, and we're good to go, any other comments?
I'm sorry?
Please, the contract.
Oh, the proposal, I'm sorry, it is a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, that includes the management, the design, getting all the permits from the different federal agencies that are required, there are four federal agencies that we must have permits from. Page, hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. And all the hours and costs are outlined in the charts there.
And this is Mr. Frabelli, right?
No, this is Mr. Hector Lopez.
Mr. Hector Lopez, anything you would like to add, Mr. Lopez?
Mayor.
Aye.
Commissioners, administration, good afternoon, again, my name is Hector Lopez, I'm a project manager with SMB Infrastructure. It is an interesting project, and we're undertaking the development of eighty acres right across here, almost. Back in 2004, SMB was engaged doing a conditional letter of map revision, which is basically the hydraulic analysis to take that property out of the flood zone, and we had, that was submitted in 2014, in 2016, we received a letter from FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Administration, that yes, they will concur, they concur with our analysis, and so as part of this work, once the work is completed, then you need to submit the backup to FEMA saying, okay, we have completed what we said in our original drawings, we are certifying that the work has been done, and now we also would be required to submit the revised drawing showing, you know, that it is outside the firm map, and that would establish basically being able for the developers to come in and build, and of course, obtain insurance, which is basically the purpose of the project.
With the EDA project as part of support for this commercial development, we are taking that application to FEMA and doing the excavation, we are also adding a public road, which we have not named yet, that will assist in the drainage of the development, thereby making the application to FEMA possible to get it out of a flood zone.
Now, we're also doing what we call an environmental review, we were engaged preparing the conditional letter of map revision, the developer, Mr. Troy Batam from San Jose O.T., conducted other studies after that, he has submitted some information to us where he believes he is ready to proceed with the project. We haven't had a chance to thoroughly review it, but we're planning to do that, to ensure that once we start, basically what we're doing is widening and excavating along the channel, and we want to make sure that we stay within the boundaries that the permit says, that we need to, to ensure that we're not violating any cultural resources, fish, habitats, wetlands, and that we are proceeding according to the plan of the letter of map revision. It is an interesting project, and it is quite an amount of volume of materials, we're talking three hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards, we plan to do that hopefully in ninety to one hundred and twenty days, and I'm sure Fernando can attest to what it would take to move three hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards, it's.
It is a massive undertaking, that's for sure.
As far as excavation, it seems simple, but when you've got to move two, three thousand yards a day for ninety consecutive days, it's a challenge, yes.
And these are requirements, there are special conditions tied to the award from EDA, we have to get a clearance from the Texas State Historic Preservation Officer, Texas Historical Commission, and from the U.S. Corps of Engineers, and what he was saying about that environmental review, the Corps of Engineers, that process in and by itself could take anywhere from six to a year in getting a permit, so we're trying to stay away from their area in order to make this project move along faster.
Okay, okay.
So they're very familiar with the project, since you just heard they're, they actually did the plans to take to FEMA.
And in fact, you already have some prior knowledge, obviously, of this project itself, so, all right, thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, do we entertain a motion at this time?
I assume move.
Okay, we have a motion to execute contract with SMB Infrastructure, we have a second by Commissioner Ramirez, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Mr. Mayor, we're still pending the presentation by our librarian, Mrs. Moon, for the library.
Mayor, before you get started, I'd like to kind of share this with you, this information's coming from Ms. Foltz on the foot traffic that comes through the library, you look at the number for 2017, it's not a small number, obviously, all of that is done with her team being in sync and on a common goal, and it's amazing, that number, and I'll let you share it, but they do a lot of things throughout the year, and it's, you know, I'm surprised the doors are still standing, as many people walk through those doors.
I did tell Mr. Perez that we do need new doors. That we are having trouble, Public Works can attest to that, they've come to help adjust and readjust several times, but quickly, before we move on to that.
Go ahead, Ms. Foltz.
I would like to tell you that we are having a Paseo del Arte on April the 12th, what we like to do is also promote our culture, our, the arts, we want to gain an audience for them, they are so talented, we have students and adults coming in from Roma, Durand de la Gruia, Mission, McAllen, we really do have, they want to come and showcase their art, and we need to gain an audience for them. We have local craft vendors that come, we have music, we have light refreshments there, and it's just a nice two-hour evening at the Lopez De Higuita Complex from five to seven, so I invite all of you to come. The next big event that we have is April the 26th, and that's for Dia del Niño, we already have over fifty vendors that have said, yes, we'll come in and they'll share a craft or a game, and we're also going to be giving out a lot of door prices for the children. We do a lot for kids, teens, and adults, we try to serve all our patrons in English and Spanish, I have a great team, they're all right here, very proud of them. We applied for this award, it was ten different criterias, and you had to show three examples in each area, and it's not just saying we do this, it was like newspaper articles, flyers, photographs, it's a whole package that we put together.
And with that note, Ms. Foltz, certainly gives us great pleasure and the honor and the privilege, when you're looking at the work that you all have done, it's tremendous, I mean, it's incredible, when you're looking at the amount of resources that we have, but yet, the results that you have had are incredible, when you're looking at thirty-five thousand individuals traversing through the library, and of course, we understand, the fact is that it is a small library, but you're walking among giants, because when you're looking at this award, I mean, the Texas Achievement of Library Excellence Award, when again, when you factor the amount of resources, but yet, using, utilizing it in a way that's efficient, that's effective, and still being able to produce a result, particularly when you have other municipalities that are certainly much larger and committed more resources, but yet, your staff have accomplished something that only ten percent of all public libraries can, or have that honor to say, then we are among those, and of course, it's to you, Ms. Foltz, to your staff, obviously, that makes it, I mean, again, I cannot say how proud it is to recognize you all for this accomplishment, again, when you're looking at top ten percent in the entire state of Texas, we're not just talking about here, this is the entire state of Texas, again, it's incredible, Ms. Foltz, and I commend your staff, I commend you, and I know I've been to the different events that you all have, and I see the teamwork, you're out there, you're participating, certainly Paseo del Arte the other day, I mean, it was the talent that's out there, but again, takes a group of individuals that are willing to do more than what is expected of them, which that is, again, it's incredible, and hence the result, right? So, kudos, Ms. Foltz, I cannot stress that enough.
Thank you.
And how proud we are.
Thank you, Mayor, we really appreciate that, and the numbers that Mr. Perez just shared with you, I will share with the rest of the commission in our next city council meeting, but as you all know, for, to be an accredited library, there's a big other criteria that we have to meet, and one of them is keeping up with our gate count, and so for a long time, I know some of you commissioners were here, when we were still counting stick figures, and I knew that those numbers were up, I knew we were serving more people, and so I kind of begged and pleaded, and finally, I got the yes, we got the okay to get our gate counter, and so the very first month that we saw we reached three thousand visitors, I called the state library and said, there's going to be a change in the numbers that we are submitting, because we now have a gate counter, so I was very excited, I didn't want to wait, I wanted to share that result with you, because we're very, we can't even believe that, you know, over thirty-five thousand people are coming through our doors, now I understand why we get a little bit more tired than we did the other day, but we love what we do, we're very thankful for the opportunity to serve our community.
And with that too, Ms. Foltz, of course, tell us about your guest lecturer experience with the University of Alabama.
Thank you, sometimes, things happen in the strangest ways, but I got asked to be a guest speaker for the University of Alabama Public Libraries Class, they wanted a small rural librarian, and the library director that is also the professor happens to be a director of Fort Worth Public Library, so she said, when I asked, who would be a good speaker, your name is what came up, so she kind of called, interviewed me, and then we just had that class on March 22nd, and I thank you, Mayor, for giving me the idea of take a picture, just kind of to, to keep that, you know, memory, and I was so busy getting everything adjusted, that I forgot that I had somebody taking pictures, but it was very nice, we had students calling on chat, and then calling, actually calling to ask questions, and they were very pleased with what we're doing, they wanted to get an aspect from the small rural libraries, because they wanted the class to understand that when you work in a big library, you might be the teen librarian, you might be the reference librarian, you might be the children's librarian, but when you work in a small rural library, you're everything, you select the books, you help the patrons, you know, we're the gardeners, we're the janitors, we do a little bit of everything, and so they wanted the class to have that feel, so it was a very rewarding experience, really appreciated that opportunity as well, and I just found out also that I've been appointed by the Texas Library Association President to be representing the Latino Caucus in a Diversity and Inclusion Committee for TLA, so that's very exciting, that'll be coming up in 2019. Some great things that we're doing, but I couldn't do it, of course, without your support, without my great team, my assistant has been with me for over twenty-one years, you know, it's, it just, it does take a team.
So how does it feel to be a guest lecturer for the University of Alabama, not just any university, Alabama?
I know.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
And with that, well, we have the award, if we can, Ms. Foltz, again, your staff. To read it out loud, Achievement of Excellence 2017 in Libraries Award, 2017 Achievement of Excellence in Libraries Award presented to Rio Grande City Public Library, awarded by the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association. We currently, we definitely can't top that the rest of this evening, so, but again, it is awesome. Moving on to, are we done with the rest?
Yes.
Wait, should we go fast? Wait, sir, you go fast. Mr. Mayor Protem? It's like lightning.
He's efficient.
That's very efficient.
We're here taking time.
All right, moving on to number eight, executive session, chapter 551, Texas Government Code, section 551.071, consultation with attorney, section 551.072, Texas Local Government Code. And it's letters A, B, and C, consultation with city attorney regarding cause number DC15604, BFY Way Services of Texas, and allied way services of Río Grande Valley versus City of Río Grande City, Texas, and its elected officials. Letter B, consultation with city attorney regarding status update on economic development agreement related to the St. Ives Development Project under chapter 380 of the Texas Local Government Code, code, I mean, section 551.071 and section 551.087, Texas Government Code. And C, consultation with city attorney regarding status update on annexation. This time, it is 7:12 PM. Back from executive session, it is 8:09 PM. And returning on items nine, reconvene into regular session and consideration of action on matters discussed during executive session, including the following, letter A, B, and C. And there's no action on item A, no action on item B, and no action on item C at this time during executive session or reconvene. This time, do we entertain a motion for adjournment?
I assume move.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ramirez, taken by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, meeting adjourned. It is 8:09 PM.